Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to reform our, for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart and soul.
Clerk will read the roll.
Counselor Zabat.
Present.
Counselor Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Recupero. Counselor Robinson.
Yeah.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Vido.
Present.
Counselor Maldonado. Counselor Rodriguez.
Here.
Counselor Zanetta.
Here.
And Counselor Lopez.
Here.
You have a full call on Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
The memorials and celebratory resolutions, we have a late resolution introduced by Counselor Zabat, Counselor Zanetta, Counselor Maldonado, Counselor Recupero, Counselor Vido, Counselor Garcia, and Counselor Robinson, and Counselor Lopez. The resolution reads, whereas International Women's Day on March 8th is a global day celebrating the achievements of women, and whereas in 1987 Congress declared March as National Women's History Month, whereas International Women's Day has occurred for over a century with the first people and whereas the 10 values that guide International Women's Day are justice, dignity, appreciation, respect, empathy, forgiveness, and whereas women hold prominent leadership in supporting roles throughout Chelsea in the nonprofit government and business sectors, whereas the Chelsea City Council currently has the unprecedented number of four female city councilors, and whereas women historically have created the backbone of the Chelsea community as mothers, daughters, sisters, aunts, neighbors, activists, and whereas the year 2020 marks the 100th anniversary of the passage of the 19th Amendment guaranteeing and protecting women's constitutional right to vote, there therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Chelsea that the city recognizes women globally and locally in honor of International Women's Day and National History Month.
What is the will of the council? Chair recognizes Counselor Zabat.
Thank you.
Want to make motion?
Oh, what?
Do you want to adopt under suspension?
Adopt under suspension.
Okay. Would you like to speak?
I would, thank you. I just would like to very quickly just make mention of why I propose this resolution, and yesterday was Women's International Day, but this entire month, we are recognizing women nationally, but I would like to say internationally, we are recognizing women for everything that we do, and we, and to recognize especially the women of Chelsea. So that's why I did this, and I hope that everybody will join me in it. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Counselor Brown.
I want to thank Counselor for bringing this resolution before us. It's a great honor to get up and speak on the culture and the history and the dedication of women and all they, not only they've done, but what they're doing today. I also want to congratulate the four dynamic women that we have sitting on our City Council for your work and your dedication to our city and our state. So this is a very good resolution. It has a lot of worthiness in it, and I want to again, thank you for making it, and I did hit yes to have my name put on it, but you know what? It's not about the name, it's about what the women do. Thank you.
Counselor Vido.
I wasn't going to speak, but I get so inspired when we start talking about women that I just have to say something. As the resolution states, there are, there are four, for the first time in history, we have the most women we've ever had on the City Council, so that's definitely worth recognizing. I also just want to acknowledge that women have been at the forefront of movements for many, many years, we just never got the credit for it, and just 100 years ago, women weren't even allowed the right to vote, so this is super, I recognize that by us even being here, I'm speaking to my female colleagues, that we're creating history, and so it's important for me to make sure that we're walking in their powers, I know that you too, for our, for our daughters and the young women in this community. I wanted to say something else. I want to say something about women's leadership. Women's leadership is different, and this is no, and no offense to my male colleagues, but it's our month, so can I have my moment? The beautiful thing about women leadership is that we're inclusive. We are mothers, we are grandmothers, we are aunts, and we have sons, and we have brothers, and so it's a little different than when, when men have been in power, because no offense, but men have been in power for a long time, and we literally had to fight our way in. So I just wanted to make sure to lift that and to acknowledge that, and thank my sisters on the City Council and my sister counselor for bringing this forth. Thank you.
Counselor Recupero.
I only want to say one thing. It's very simple. Women is the best part of men. Without women, there'd be no man.
Seeing none. That motion carries under suspension.
Public speaking, Mr. Chairman.
There are no other resolutions, is there?
No.
We'll now open the public speaking portion of this meeting. Anyone in the audience who would like to address the City Council, please step to the podium and state your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Mike Sandoval, 45 Carroll Street. I'm here to represent the City of Chelsea Department of Public Works. And the reason why we're here, me personally, is I need your cooperation to help. It's been, so the ordinance about the trash barrels came into effect January 1st, 2020, which stipulates city-issued trash barrels are the only ones that should be allowed on the public way, curbside. So the city has invested a lot of money buying 64-gallons trash barrels. They are free of charge for the whole city, the pays for city trash collection. So we have lots in our inventory, and we are going around and distributing more barrels as you need them. So, and the reason why we're here is because I want to ask for your input. If you have friends or you own a family home and have tenants, please have them take those, all barrels taken out of circulation, okay? There are a lot of beat-up, shoot-up trash barrels, no lids. So it's very important, okay? If you need an extra barrel, please let me know, let us know here. Call our office, 617-466-4200, or if you see me driving down the street, please say hello, stop by, and we will more than happy to assist you with that. So, esta noche estamos aquí. Mi nombre es Mike Sandoval. Muchos de ustedes me conocen. Yo soy el coordinador del programa de los desechos sólidos y la reciclaje de la ciudad de Chelsea. Queremos informarles que comenzando el 01º de 2020, se incorporó en la ordenanza en la ciudad de que únicamente los barriles que la ciudad ha designado, la ciudad de Chelsea, pueden ser utilizados para la basura. Nos referimos una vez que está en la vía pública. También queremos decirles que la bolsa naranja, si es opción de ustedes usarla, puede estar en el día de su recolección en la acera, o puede estar dentro del barril. En la propiedad privada, no debe estar en el piso, debe estar en un barril. So, sé que si alguno de ustedes necesita un barril extra, nosotros lo podemos proveer libre de cargos. Tenemos suficientes barriles en nuestro inventario que podemos promocionarle a ustedes. Si tienen deseos o le gustaría uno extra, pueden llamar a nuestra oficina, 617-466-4200. Muchos de ustedes me conocen, si me miran por las calles manejando, caminando, me pueden hacer un alto, y yo con mucho gusto lo voy a atender. Muchas gracias.
Anyone else?
Good evening. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. Alexander J. Floyd Vargas, 260 Clark Ave, in Chelsea at the Margolis Building. Also, I wanted to, also to say not to duplicate work, but I was and I am trying to meet with everybody I can think of and see if they have any suggestions or anything that they need for the Chelsea Disability Commission to do in the future. I also talked to Francisco Toro today of the Veterans Affairs and asked him and wanted him to tell me what he does, and he also wanted a, an event in August, even though I think there's probably something in May and July, but again, that's in the future to have here in front of City Hall, so there was another suggestion. So, just wish I could talk to some more people about if there's any ideas or suggestions that can also help all the citizens of Chelsea as well as the disabled citizens of Chelsea, or if it's the same thing. So I'm trying to request that to meet with people. And we also will have a meeting here, the Disability Commission, on Wednesday of this week, so, thank you.
Good evening. Buenas noches. My name is Angel Mesa. I live in Viola Street, here in Chelsea. And let me start by saying congratulations for passing a resolution on, yesterday was the International Women's Day. They born in United States, but not in the White House, but not in the Congress. He born in workers from factories, people who are unionized, women who are unionized, not the ones who, wife of the oppressor, the wife of the bosses, who steal the money from the workers, exploit the workers. So it's a very important day to celebrate and understand. I also wanted to, I've been worried about situation of the immigrant. This city is a predominantly, from population of immigrants, and I do like to, to see this City Council to take some kind of action to reaffirm our commitment of being a sanctuary city. We need, we need your support, and we need the support of everyone. I'd like to cheer with you, a reflection from the pastor and the time of the Nazis, of the persecution. We say it, his name is Martin Nemo. First, they come to look for the communists, and I say nothing because I was not a communist. Then they come for the Jews, and I say nothing because I was not a Jew. Then they come for the Tra Unionists, and I say nothing because I was no Atr Unionist. Then they come for the Catholics, and I say nothing because I was a Protestant. Then they come for me, but then there was no one left to say anything. And I say that, I share with you this reflection because our immigrant community is going through a lot of pain, and I think any person with some type of conscience and conviction that like to see freedom, you don't want to be her, you don't want to, if you don't, it's like, it's very hard to put in somebody else's shoes. Our families will live or go send children to school who is kind of afraid that something can happen. Our community is hard-working community through the history, even Chelsea, like in 40 years ago. I remember seeing women's, men's in factories, and these days, we're going through a difficult time, and I only come here to see this City Council to embrace and be in solidarity with those who are persecuted by immigration, particularly by ICE. We don't want the ICE in our community. We want more peace for our community. We want our children not to go to a school afraid. We want our children to feel happy like your children, if you are, no matter where your status are. This is a question of humanity, this is a question of solidarity. So I hope that if you pass a resolution, if you don't pass it, it's fine. This is already passed a long time ago, a resolution that is, this is a sanctuary city. So I asking you to reaffirm and to feel the pain of others, just like your own pain. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Marisol Santiago. I live at 25 Hooper Street. I am the school committee member for District 3. I'm coming today just to be able to address the City Council as a whole in regards to the announcement of the Charter Review Committee appointments that were made. Number one, I, for folks that may have been following, this is a once-in-a-decade opportunity where the city is able to really look at what we call our city's constitution, in that there are beautiful pieces that makes Chelsea great, that we have to protect, in terms of the integrity, the historical knowledge and contributions of our diverse immigrant community in this beautiful city. There were a number of people that applied to be part of that process that had expressed to me that they had not received any communication once they had submitted, as requested, their information forward in their interest. Upon receiving communication Friday of who the committee selected appointees were, I felt completely disappointed and concerned. That body is comprised by five City Council members, three school committee members, and five community residents. And I found that it was either willfully excluding the voices of the diverse lived experiences that make up Chelsea from one end, and on the other aspect, I found missing single moms, I found missing tenants, I found people that, as Don Mesa has alluded to, are at the front lines of working with immigrant groups, giving services, doing the hard labor that people often don't understand what that's like unless you're directly involved with it. It brings, it brings a lens that is super critical when we're considering how we handle and edit and modify the city's constitution. And so per the charter, the City Council President is responsible for those decisions. What your process was is within your authority and your discretion. What the responsibility of the City Council is, is to make sure that it is inclusive and representative of the city population, which I think merits some review. As a school committee member, I am here to represent all the students and the families that Don Mesa alludes to, that are severely concerned and really scared. We're in the midst of a census count. The last thing we want is people to be afraid to fill out a census. This is how we get critical funding for our schools. Secondly, upon looking at the council members that were selected, diversity is not just skin color and ethnicity, diversity is voice and representation. This weekend, I was handed literature from Counselor Todd Taylor, in which he was distributing locally in this, in this recent election, and some of that language included that he is advocating for legal immigrants, advocating against a sanctuary state, and defending President Donald Trump. Bold letters that I have, I'm happy to send to each City Council member. While Counselor Todd Taylor is within his right to run for council and be elected by the body that, the voters that elected him, no dispute, that is the democratic process. What I have trouble with is that the vast people that are doing that direct labor with immigrant groups and other voices in this community were completely bypassed for someone that publicly taunts these positions at this current time in our country. So I find this under the responsibility of the City Council President, or if this is going to be Counselor Judith Garcia's chairperson of the committee, that is within your discretion to discuss, but there are people here, people not here, that are concerned about that rhetoric and that are concerned about somebody who is trying to represent our city in being appointed in a charter review that determines what our city's going to look like in the next 10 years. That is super serious, I take it very seriously. As the mother who's raising a child in the Chelsea Public Schools that has to talk with parents every single day, I have an advocate who is the strongest advocate in the state, she's a green card holder. Per the charter, per the charter, only registered voters can be part of that committee. That deserves something to be looked at, but how are we going to guarantee that that process is done with integrity and with no political agenda, nor for any political expediency by, by excluding the people that otherwise have submitted and were afforded a response? So I come here today to say that is seen, and it's not going to be tolerated, and the responsibility is just not on the authority of the Council President. I'm asking each City Council member to communicate with the Council President with this decision, to review it, because there are community members that are going to express their concern. Secondarily, I would ask Council President, President Avi Yana, to determine if Counselor Taylor should step down from his appointment, and maybe somebody else can be considered. Or lastly, that you look at the composition of the, of the people that were selected as part of the community, seeing how there's also opportunity there. That is within your discretion. I'm just here to tell you my ultimate concern, that I think merits serious attention. And I don't appreciate you coming into the city and spreading that at this time, when we have people that are literally trying to like, find community, where we've organized for years, and I think I speak to, I think it's safe to say, Counselor Avi Yana, that these are values that you believe in as well, that you have championed in some time in history as well. And so I'm not in the business of sitting here once in a decade to reverse all the hard work that people have done here, and I hope that that will seriously be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Seeing no further speakers, we move on to the next item on the agenda.
Approval of the minutes.
Approval of minutes. The...
Accept and file.
Accept and file. Counselor Lopez moves that.
Okay.
Yes.
Since I was named in that public attack, I'd like the ability to respond.
It's not a public attack, it's mine, right? As a public citizen, during a public meeting, maybe you need to recognize what the money is not for us. It was mine. You want to have a conversation?
Mr., Mr., Mr. President. I would ask the audience, please retain its house.
Right, let's not, it's not fair money.
I would ask, thank you. Chair recognizes Counselor Todd Taylor for appointed privilege.
So, the comments that were just made, I would like to address in this manner. I have never come to this body, I have never quote-unquote brought national politics to this body, but it's being brought here tonight. Now, it seems like I'm being asked to step down from my views. Why not just ask me to step down from my seat? You probably would love that, but I was elected by the constituents of Chelsea. I have always been fair, I've always been honest about my views. I have never once come to talk about sanctuary cities in this body. If there's anybody who wants to talk to me about this issue, I would be happy to discuss it with them, and I hope that people understand that the great diversity of Chelsea has not just to do with race or religion, but also has to do with a diversity of opinion. So while somebody can get up and criticize me for my views, that's their right. I open my phone to anybody that wants to discuss immigration or sanctuary cities with me. This is a very complex issue, and I'd be happy to discuss it, and if some, if someone would have actually called me to discuss this, I would have been happy to do it. Instead, they want to come and make a public speech condemning me. So I would ask the people of Chelsea to be fair about this, and if you want to have a dialogue, I'll be happy to have one, but I don't appreciate people coming up and basically attacking me for something that I have not brought to this council, and if they think that running for a party office in which I was just re-elected to my post as a Republican of the State Committee man, if those issues were brought forth in any way in Chelsea by me, have they ever been? I'd like, I'd like people to, to understand, I never brought national politics to this board. I, I was elected to solve the problems of Chelsea, and that's exactly what I'm going to do. Anyone who feels free to discuss this with me is free to. Thank you.
Clerk will read the communication from City Manager.
First communication from the City Manager. Request for approval of union contract with SEIU Local 888. Dear Counselors pursuant to Section 431 of the Chelsea City Charter, I am writing to request City Council approval of the cost items of the new collective bargaining agreement negotiated with the SEIU Local 888 for the paper July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022. A copy of the memorandum of agreement is attached. The memorandum of agreement outlines the changes to the contract terms, as was true in many of the other negotiations, the most significant union concession from SEIU is the change to compensatory time outlined in paragraph four. Under the terms of this agreement, compensatory time is now limited to a total of 70 hours per calendar year, a major reduction from the previous ceiling of 240 hours. The major cost items of this agreement are the annual raises in the following amounts: FY 22.5%, FY 21, 2.75%, and FY 22, 3%. The total cost of all wages increases over the three years of the contract is approximately I respectfully ask that the City Council approve the cost items of this contract as well as a transfer from the shallow reserve account in the total amount of $91,420 to accommodate the FY 20 costs. Copies of the proposed orders to effectuate this transfer are attached.
Chair recognizes Counselor Robinson.
Accept and file a communication, there'll be an audit coming up on the new business.
Next communication.
Next communication from the City Manager. Additional free cash requests. I am writing with four additional requests for the use of free cash. The total amount of these requests is $691,250 with one exception. The requests seek funding to maintain existing... The requests seek funding to maintain existing programs in the city.
Clerk, would you just read the top line?
Of each one. Continuation of the Bunker Hill Scholarship Program, $191,250. Continuation of the Senior Transportation Program, $75,000. Support for Housing Rehabilitation Program, $300,000. Funds for Noise Evaluation, Modeling and Monitoring, $125,000.
Chair recognizes Counselor Robinson.
I'll, the communication, there'll be audits coming up on the new business.
Our communications and petitions to the council, we have a copy of a communication from President Abenada regarding appointments to the Charter Review Committee. Council Board of the National School Committee Chairwoman Kelly Garcia announced the designated members of the Charter Review Committee. The City of Chelsea is required to review the Charter Review every 10 years. The Charter Review Committee per the Charter is comprised of 13 members, five city counselors, three school committee members and five Chelsea registered voters. Those selected to serve are as follows, City Counselors Judith Garcia, Chairperson Leo Robinson, Calvin Brown, Melinda Vega, Maldonado and Todd Taylor. School Committee Members Rose Marie Carlisle, Yesina Alfaro and Henry Wilson. Chelsea Residents Alex Belka Brusell, Jason Starker, Mary Book, Mimi Rancator and Charlene McLean.
Do I have any motions? Counselor Aviyaneda.
To accept and file under suspension if I may speak on the communication.
Do we have a second for that motion? You have the floor.
Thank you.
To those who are in the audience and those at home, this is a communication stating the finalization of the committee for the Charter Review. And I know we've heard some comments so far. Just to let everyone know, we had a deadline of February, the last week, February 28th, I believe, to, for any submissions of anyone who was interested. There were a number of interested parties and I did the best I could to try to include as many people as possible to have a diversity here and also take into account that very same thing from, based on the composition of the school committee. I did not have any role in the makeup of the school committee or the selection of the, of those members that was made by Kelly Garcia and she can speak about that if she'd like. From this council, I'm proud to designate Vice President Judith Garcia and obviously Melinda Vega, Leo Robinson, steward of the council, Calvin Brown and Todd Taylor. There was a question, and the residents were already named. There was a question about the diversity and the makeup. If someone was to look at this, they'll see there are seven women on this committee, six men. Seven of the six is majority minority. I took a look at people who had, on the resident side, people had a business background, public service and as we just saw, a range of ideology and opinions and party affiliation. Again, I tried to make it as diverse as possible. Anytime you make a committee like this, of course, there's going to be some public comments, some criticism. But I did the best based on the submissions that were from the residents themselves and I hope that people are, you know, come to be a little bit more satisfied once they hear the process and take a look at true number of the, of the numbers, of the makeup. I myself did not put myself on there, I had served in 2010. I felt that I didn't deserve to be back on there again and give some other people an opportunity. Also, I just want to make sure that this is very clear. As I've stated, just because I'm not on the sub, on the committee, on the Charter Review, does not mean that I cannot participate. I plan on making some submissions, some recommendations, some ideas and attend the meeting. That is the right of any resident, whether they are a registered voter, whether they are a resident or, I mean, a citizen or not. Whether you are a city council who was not put on the committee or a school committee person, you can submit any ideas to the committee. And the committee, and I feel that under the direction of those who I just put in there in charge, will receive them. This committee will weigh them, vet them. And if it, and if you, if they think that they should make that and there's a support for those ideas or changes, it will happen. So again, I want everyone just to take it a notch down and say that, look, this is an open process and that anyone who has any ideas for changes will happen. Have faith in those who are put on there and I think we'll have a satisfactory resolution towards the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairwoman recognizes Councilwoman Vido.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. In honor of International Women's History Month, I cannot afford to take it down another notch. I am extremely disappointed with this Charter Review. I, I appreciate the comments that were said. I appreciate that we're inviting people to come to the Charter Review Committee and give their opinions. However, this is a huge issue because what, the chairman is showing that at the very core of this committee, what he is really trying to establish is a one-sided crew to further push. You shouldn't be up at the chair until this, this is over.
I'm not talking.
Okay, well, I guess we make our own rules. Nonetheless, this committee is lacking in diversity in terms of the Latino community that is the overwhelming population of this city. This Charter Review Committee is lacking in terms of having, having single moms, having mothers of school-aged children, young people. We don't, there is, I believe, one tenant on the whole thing. In the midst of a housing crisis in this city, what we're doing is perpetuating and pushing homeowners in the city, a, a crew of homeowners at the hands of a chairman that does real estate for a living, does anybody see this? And then, you know, honestly, I can't, I wasn't going to say anything because me and the chairman have our past and every time I say something, it's like, it's constant. But at the end of the day, the reason why I was elected was to bring up these truths. This Charter Committee and the Charter, the Charter just for the people at home, it comes up once every 10 years. And so you set a group of people to come up and look at the constitution of the city to figure out, how can we better the city? What are some of the criteria of elected officials and nominations? How do we look at these boards, the makeup of the city? We have an opportunity to reflect the new charter, to be reflective of the new community. I'm not saying that the sector of the, of the community that is one-sidedly represented in this group should not have a voice, absolutely. What I'm saying is that it needs to be a little bit more multi-dimensional so that all voices are included here. It is not inclusive and there are experiences that other people bring into this community that are not being echoed here. I just wanted to make sure to echo it and to say it out loud into the record, this is not just, this is exactly what perpetuates the same crap that has happened in this city for too long. And I'm extremely disappointed, especially when I look that there are people on the committee that have been probably on the, since we've ever had a charter, since we lost a mayor, the past three or four cycles. It is problematic, it is not reflective of our values and I wanted to make sure to say it out loud for everybody. Thank you.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes, I also want to put my input on this. On the Chelsea residents, I don't see a diversity. Most of the people that are here, the majority of people who live in Chelsea is Latino. And I don't see too many Latinos here in the Chelsea residents, that's all I want to say, thank you.
Counselor Robinson.
I actually was not going to speak. I, I take offense in the fact that people are showing no credibility to the people who are going to serve on this council. First of all, I think that the people who are named to this committee are going to be fair and above reproach. And for people to come up there and sling stuff at, at folk is very unfair. And like I could say to my Latino brothers and sisters, we have the census coming up. We should be focused on that and making sure that we get out there and make sure that everybody's counted because that affects our community, our schools, our grants, and that's the things we should be talking about.
Counselor Recupro.
I don't have much to say, I've lived in this city 40 years. And what I see in this city is an elite few that run this city, still want to run this city. The people should have a say, no matter what it is. The elite is out the door. The people is why they liked us and we represent the people. So the people should have a say. The elite are out the door. Maybe I'll be out the door, it doesn't matter to me if I'm out the door or I'm in the door. The only thing I care about is to say the truth for the people of this city. It's about time that the people of this city realize that they are the voice, they are the power, not the elite few. You be the power. And at the end, you can get rid of me anytime you want to, it doesn't matter. If you get rid of me or you keep me, but you are the ones that are going to pay at the end if you don't let your voices be heard.
Counselor Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to say, and first of all, begin by saying that I really appreciate and thank the residents who have spoken about the matter. And it's, it's clearly a case that we are all passionate about because underlying everything, we're all passionate about our community and we're passionate about the fact that we want the best for an inclusive agenda when it comes to making decisions that matter for the city. That being said, I was named the Chairwoman for the, the council side of the committee and I am incredibly grateful for that. And I can say that at least on my end, I am going to learn what my role will entail. But the only promise and guarantee that I make is that I will be, I will try to be as best, as fair as I can be and ensure that all the voices of all the parties that come forward are heard, including my colleagues, but also the residents and everyone who is concerned. I don't know what the protocol is of revisiting the members that were appointed by the president. I know that there are processes in place, I don't know if that could be challenged. But that being said, I can only commit to my role as a Chairwoman and that is that I am committed to all the residents to listen, to really take your feedback and I will keep an open door policy, open phone call, open email policy. Feel free to contact me if you have any questions, doubts or concerns. And, and that's my commitment there. And again, I, I am going to be learning what that process entails as, as we move forward. So, thank you.
Counselor Taylor.
I'd like to tell everybody that I'm committed 100% to the fairness of this Charter Review Board and my participation will be fair and open for anyone to scrutinize about everything. So, when you, when you listen to the kind of things that were said before, you come in and watch, you come in and you watch my participation and then you make a judgment on who is fair and who is not.
Any other, any other comments? Thank you.
Next, next communication. Communication, we have a copy of a communication received from Joseph Shevko regarding the Chelsea Retirement Board Compensation. Dear Honorable Members of the City Council, I would like to request the adoption of an order pursuant to the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 32 and 20.6, increasing the compensation of the members of the Chelsea Retirement Board from $3,000 per year to $4,500 per year. The members of the Chelsea Retirement Board have not had an increase for many years and are spending well more than the average hours preparing and attending hearings, attending classes for their CLE credits required and meetings that they have in the past. The members' compensation is not paid by the City of Chelsea. I am willing to meet with you to discuss the request attached, the order reflects my wishes.
An order coming up on the new business.
We have a late communication received from Paul Lewicki, Chelsea Chamber of Commerce Chairperson, Government Affairs Subcommittee.
Do you have any objections to the late communication? Seeing none. I'll read it. Dear Honorable City Council, as Director of the Chelsea Chamber of Commerce and Chairperson of the Chamber Subcommittee for Government Affairs, I submit this letter in support for, of additional Subcommittee meeting regarding the Home Room Petition pertaining to 10 additional liquor licenses for the City of Chelsea. The Chamber so encourages that the City Council has taken this initiative up for discussion and adoption. We feel this will have a tremendous positive impact on our business community and create more opportunities to connect the entire city through our restaurants. The Home Room Petition, as it is written, gives us great hope that it can be accomplished as we focus on restaurants, hotels and large function halls and not on barrooms, private clubs or liquor stores. The Chamber respectfully requests this Honorable City Council to be part of this Subcommittee Conference as we work together in moving our great city forward. Is there a motion? Counselor Robinson asks that this be accepted.
Communication under suspension.
Under suspension. Seeing none.
Okay. Leo Robinson. We have now unfinished business.
Matters and unfinished business.
And second readings.
And second readings.
Remove from conference and act upon. Let me see, the first one would be the order introduced by Counselor Robinson, order that pursuant to Section 43 of the Chelsea City Charter, the Chelsea City Council approved the cost items set forth in the Collective Bargaining Agreement negotiated with Teamsters Local 25 for the DPW memorialized in the memorandum of agreement for fiscal years 2022, dated October 30, 2019.
I'd ask for a roll call on the adoption.
Hold on. Before you read the roll call.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay.
Clerk, will you read the roll?
Counselor Zabit.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia. She's not here. Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Recupro, absent. Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Vido.
Present.
Counselor Maldonado. Counselor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Abenada.
Yes.
And Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight in favor. None opposed, three absent, the motion is adopted. The next money issue is ordered that to fund the collective bargaining agreement negotiated with the Teamsters Local 25 for the DPW for fiscal years 2020, the Chelsea City Council authorized the transfer of $40,879.82 from the salary reserve account to the following accounts. The FY 2020 DPW Streets and Sidewalks Regular Salaries Account in the amount of $29,761.62. The FY 2020 DPW Sewer Regular Salaries Account in the amount of $5,559.10 and the FY 2020 DPW Water Regular Salaries Account in the amount of $5,559.10. Counselor Zabit.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia, absent.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Recupro, absent. Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Vido, absent. Counsel Maldonado. Counsel Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Abenada.
Yes.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Nine members in favor, none opposed, two absent, the motion carries. Under second readings, the financial orders removed from conference were ordered that pursuant to Section 4-31 of the Chelsea City Charter, Chelsea City Council approved the cost items set forth in the Collective Bargaining Agreement negotiated with USWA Local 9427 memorialized in the memorandum of agreement for fiscal years 2020 to 2022 dated November 1, 2019.
I'd ask a roll call on the adoption.
Clerk, call roll for the adoption.
Counselor Zabit.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Recupro. Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Vido.
Yes.
Counsel Maldonado. Counsel Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Abenada.
Yes.
Counsel Lopez.
Yes.
Eleven members in favor, none opposed, the motion carries. The final order is ordered that to fund the collective bargaining agreement negotiated with the USWA- with the USWA Local 9427 for fiscal years 2020, the Chelsea City Council authorizes the transfer of $96,946 from the salary reserve account to the FY 2020 regular salaries account to fund the FY 2020 contract wage increases, such payments to be allocated by department.
What is the wish of the council?
Roll call vote and I'd ask the chair of the two parties that had to step out on the DPW stuff, need to step out again?
I think that is if it's general.
All right, just for their protection, I asked.
There are.
DPW.
Yes, two, a couple line honors for DPW admin, so we're going to.
You have an ethics opinion?
The ethics opinion, one is both counselors should state why. They should recuse themselves and or vote present. At this situation, because it's not an individual, it's a group vote, they could just sit in the room, but they should recuse themselves and vote present.
Make sure it's a big time.
You want the roll call.
Motion to roll call. On the motion, Counsel Brown.
I just had a, I want to just get a clarification from counsel. Is there an explanation that has to be presented before they can excuse themselves?
You state why and you disclose, but they tend to leave. But for example, Counselor Maldonado does not need to recuse herself. She may vote because her relative is not in this collective bargaining agreement at the police department. This is a different collective bargaining agreement that is being voted upon. So she may vote.
So just for clarification, with the two that was on the DPW, do they need to disclose?
I believe they have disclosed in the past and we do have a written financial disclosure. It's so they don't, we all are aware of their relationship to members of these collective employees. But it practices, you do disclose why and you can recuse yourself from voting.
Okay, thank you. So just for clarification for those in the audience and those at home, two members of our city council have members, family members that are on the DPW. As such, they've had in the past disclose that. There are also written declarations of that and for that matter, they are excusing themselves from this particular vote where it comes to salary in the DPW and treasury.
Counselor Zabat.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Recupero, absent. Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Brown.
Yes.
Counsel Vido, absent. Counsel Maldonado. Counsel Rodriguez. Counsel Abisenada.
Yes.
And Counsel Lopez. Nine in favor, none opposed, two absent. The motion is adopted. Those are all your financial orders. We now move on to new business. First order on the new business order introduced by Counsel Robinson, order that pursuant to Section 4-3,1 of the Chelsea City Charter, the Chelsea City Council approved the cost items set forth in a collective bargaining agreement negotiated with SEIU Local 888, memorialized in a memorandum of agreement for fiscal years 2020 to 2022, dated December 24, 2019.
Move to a second reading if there's no objections.
Seeing none, so moved.
Order introduced by Counsel Robinson, order that to fund the collective bargaining agreement negotiated with the SEIU Local 888 for fiscal years 2020, the Chelsea City Council authorizes the transfer of $91,420 from the salary reserve account to the FY 2020 regular salaries account to fund the FY 2020 contract wage increases, such payments to be allocated by the Department of following manner.
Move to a second reading if there are no objections.
Counsel Robinson moves to a second reading, seeing no objections, so moved.
Next order introduced by Counsel Robinson, order that Chelsea City Council authorized appropriation of funds in the amount of $191,250 from free cash to the Bunker Hill Community College Scholarship Program expense account to provide tuition funding for Chelsea High School graduates.
Move to a second reading if there are no objections.
Order introduced by Counsel Robinson, order that the Chelsea City Council authorized appropriation of funds in the amount of $75,000 from free cash to the FY 2020 Elder Affairs Contract Services expense account for the senior transportation program.
Move to a second reading if there are no objections.
Order introduced by Counsel Robinson, order that the Chelsea City Council authorized appropriation of funds in the amount of $300,000 in free cash to the FY 20 Planning Department Housing Rehabilitation Fund for a housing rehabilitation program eligible to Chelsea households in all areas of the city who earn up to 100% of area median income.
Move to a second reading if there are no objections.
Order introduced by Counsel Robinson, order that the Chelsea City Council authorized appropriation of funds in the amount of $125,000 in free cash from, to the FY 20 Planning Department Contract Services account for a noise study modeling and monitoring program.
Move to a second reading if there are no objections.
Order introduced by Counsel Maldonado, order that the Subcommittee on Development and Housing be held to discuss inventory and reporting on affordable housing units in Chelsea, passing an annual report which requires audits for affordable housing, real estate transfer fees, and a CPA update on application process.
Chair recognizes Counsel Maldonado, Regal.
I request that we pass the order under the suspension of our rules.
Seeing no objection, that order moves. Suspension? Under suspension.
Next order introduced by Counselor Garcia, Counsel Abisenada, Counsel Vido, Counsel Maldonado, and Counsel Lopez, reaffirming Chelsea as a sanctuary city. Whereas Chelsea is a city proud of its diversity immigrant population and being a welcoming city to people from around the world, and whereas non-citizen residents of Chelsea are valuable members of their community, working, paying taxes, sending their children to public schools, and being law-abiding neighbors. Whereas, as President Trump has repeatedly mentioned, that he would stop all federal funding for sanctuary cities also in his Trust Act cities, and whereas Chelsea has a strong and deep commitment to diversity and is proud of being a city that welcomes people from all around the world and is dedicated to ensuring that anyone living in Chelsea, documented resident or not, can live in peace, safety, and be afforded protection from physical or emotional abuse, intimidation, or discrimination. Now therefore be resolved that Chelsea City Council goes on record reaffirming our commitment as sanctuary city, and be further resolved that the city manager is hereby requested to send a letter to all Chelsea organizations working with immigrant populations, as well as all city departments, reminding them of sanctuary city status and what that means for working with non-citizens and what resources are available for anyone experiencing physical or emotional abuse or discrimination. And be further resolved that Chelsea encompasses all residents of Chelsea and around the United States to treat each other with kindness and peace and to value our differences as the most adverse country on Earth, and be further resolved that no matter the threats made against sanctuary cities, Chelsea will remain committed to our longtime policy and values and will not turn its back on the men and women from other countries who help make this city great.
Chair recognizes Counselor Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight is, as we have heard, there is a strong sentiment in our community and a strong calling for this reaffirmation. You will hear from some of my colleagues that there is no point of reaffirming our sanctuary status because this was something that they spearheaded years ago and it's somehow something that it's been done and we should not bring it up again. But unfortunately, we have reached a time where the national rhetoric is allowing for hatred to be spread. And if some of us have not been up to speed with what is happening in our own backyard, just weeks ago, a mother and her daughter were brutally attacked in East Boston for speaking Spanish. So if we talk about not seeing the point of reaffirming where this city stands when it comes to our immigrant community, then I am so disappointed of that. Because our city holds strong values and the values that we hold near and dear to our heart is to embrace everyone in our community. And what this resolution is presenting is not to get away with sanctuary cities or not acknowledging the work that you've done in the past. We acknowledge it and we thank you for spearheading that at the moment. But today, we are here to reaffirm for the new residents who have made Chelsea their home, that Chelsea has been a sanctuary city, it will remain that way, and we will continue to pass on that torch. So for clarification, we are doing this with the motivation of sending and we're actually requesting our city manager, which I know he has done an incredible job in assuring that our city hall continues to be inclusive of all. And we see that the minute you come in, there's someone there to greet you in English and Spanish. We just hired a secretary who is reflective of our community and we've been taking those actions, but what we're asking today is to continue that, to continue that legacy and to continue reminding our new employees that have joined Chelsea that this is what we are and this is what we're going to continue pushing forward. So I hope and I thank the colleagues who did sign. Thank you, Jamir Rodriguez, Counselor Melinda Vega, Counselor Giovanni Recupero, Counselor Avellaneda, I'm sorry, Counselor Avellaneda, Counselor Vido, Naomi. Thank you, Counselor Zabat, for signing this and thank you, Enio, for showing leadership and for truly standing on the right side here. And I don't want to hear anymore that national politics should not be brought to this council because national politics and local politics are not two worlds apart. Whatever happens at the national level affects us and we see that because it trickles down. Okay? So thank you all for being troopers and really understanding the community that you represent because this is not only about Latinos, this is about everyone, including everyone, you know, just everyone. So that being said, I know I probably missed a lot and I know that a lot of my colleagues are going to speak on this and greatly thank you so much for really reaffirming what this city stands for.
Counsel Robinson.
I would have asked the chair to rule this out of order and the reason being that this was passed in 2007 on a 10 to 1 vote. My colleagues have the need to feel that they need to reaffirm this vote. If this vote was to go down tonight, the sanctuary city would be gone. So keep that in mind, young lady. You've never walked in my shoes. I fought for this country. So don't tell me, you know, what life is like. Excuse me. Well, she didn't speak through the chair either, so, all right, okay. So therefore, it's nothing against being against a sanctuary city. I'm just saying it was voted on in 2007. It was a 10 to 1 vote. So I don't know what we need to reaffirm here.
Counsel Vido.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank Counselor Robinson for your service to this country and I hope that, I think it's apples and oranges, I don't know what this necessarily has to do with that, but thank you for that. I also want to thank my other colleagues that put this together to reaffirm. I've always been very proud that we've been a sanctuary city, although I wasn't serving on this council at the time when it was, when it came in, when it was adopted. So I'm actually proud that with the changes that are happening in this state, with this conversation even being brought to a state level where we're possibly looking into becoming a sanctuary state, that we have the opportunity to reaffirm our values and our stance in supporting families. I, before I get into politics, I'm not really too polished as a politician. I am a woman, I am a mother first. And I know and I hear stories firsthand of what mothers have gone through when they come to this country trying to find a better world for their families. And I know that as a mother, that there is no limit to the extent that I will go to ensure that my family is safe. So when I cast votes, I do that based on, from a place of groundedness and from love and making sure that I'm putting myself in that position. The fact of the matter is that the national rhetoric is trickling down into our backyards. And I, and you see it when people are not going to their doctor's appointments and bringing their kids to their doctor's appointments, where kids are missing school when they hear rumors that ICE is in the neighborhood. And I don't feel that anybody should ever live that way, especially in a community like Chelsea, where we all work way too hard to make sure that every voice is heard. So for me, I'm sorry, for me, I'm just, I'm just grateful to have my name on this reaffirming our status and I will continue to fight this and when it comes up to become a sanctuary state, I will be there as well. And I would like for immigrants that are not citizens to be able to vote and participate in municipal elections and they should have licenses and they have every right to be here just like everybody else, but quite frankly, unless you're Native American, I don't want to hear anything about who should be here in this country. I stand very proudly today with my, with my city councils. This is not about Latinidad or, it's not about that. It's about people having the right to live in this city safely, with dignity, and with respect. And veterans and statesmen know that our U.S. Constitution actually has language in there to support those things. So I just want to remind everybody that what we're talking about is values and making sure that the people in this city are protected and respected. That's all.
Any other counsel wish to speak?
Counsel Abisenada.
I can understand, since the city has already been designated as a sanctuary city and I was the sponsor, co-sponsor for that original motion, the question is why do we have to bring this back up? And even more so, some would say, why are we trying to draw attention when sanctuary cities are being mentioned in the press? And I know he's gone now, but my, my thought process was exactly to what Resident Angel Rosa said earlier. It's when you are being attacked, when you feel that your residents are being attacked, that you should double down and reaffirm what your values are and why should be seen. Now, I don't want, I didn't think that I should be talking about the, I never thought I'd be talking about actual actions of a president and how it affects this community. But this particular president has stated that he will stop funding to sanctuary cities and that that's a threat to us and well, maybe if we don't have that money, then maybe we'll de-designate ourselves or our policies will change to that particular individual's way of thinking and policy. Well, this vote is basically saying, we don't agree with you, your threat of withholding funds doesn't matter, we'll do without it because we're going to stand by what our, our city is made up of, our residents and our values. And again, this is part of the national debate. I know that sometimes what we're saying here doesn't go up there, but you know what? There are residents who are listening to this. So let us tell them, as pointed out earlier, yes, I should, it, there is a connection between the use of ICE in sanctuary cities at the same time when there's a census going on. There's an absolute collection, connection. We need to know that, recognize that, and stand and double down as we are tonight and say to our residents that we hold the same values we held back then. And that was the city manager and all department heads were instructed that regardless of status of their residency, that they will be treated fairly, that their status would not be used against them, that they're not going to be reported because it has nothing to do with whether or not they can live safely here. And they don't want to have that fear, God forbid, there's a child, there's a mother who's being abused and they don't want to call the police because, oh, you know, they're going to lock somebody else or the whole family is going to get wrapped up and deported. That's a real fear and unless you know those people, unless you've been in that situation, you don't recognize it, then you think, well, that, we don't need to talk about that. No, yes, we do. We need to talk about it. So I'm glad that this next generation that's here with me tonight is reaffirming what a previous council did. And I'll tell you, it was, I know it was 10 to 1, but let me just say, it was a different sentiment back then and I think it was actually. And I think it was actually not so much the desire of individuals on this council that voted that 10 to 1, but actually the public pressure that was out there that made them vote 10 to 1. That's what happened back then, I can tell you. It wasn't the fact that we had people who today really believe in this resolution back then. No, it was the fact that there was, the room was full of advocates and said, you need to do this. And under the pressure, political pressure, that city, we voted to become a sanctuary city. So again, it's an honorable moment for me to reaffirm what this, what this city committed two years ago and I'm glad to join and I appreciate my newer colleagues who are pushing this, the next generation again. Thank you.
Councilor Taylor.
So two weeks ago, I made some comments about this council when they brought up the resolution on undocumented driver's licenses. I called that virtue signaling because it was completely irrelevant what this body does to what Beacon Hill does. I was wrong. It wasn't virtue signaling. I found that out tonight because this, tonight, is really a sneak attack on conservative voices in this community and for anybody that would dare to have a different opinion. This is America and somebody gets up and wants to tar me with hate. I challenge any one of my colleagues, any one of you, or anyone out there to ever come up with anything that I've ever said, done, that was hateful, ever. Now, it is important that everybody has the right to be heard and respected because I guarantee you, if the shoe were on the other foot, if the shoe were on the other foot, it'd be a different story. Now, if people want to have a debate about sanctuary cities, I'm not afraid to have that debate, but it's a complicated issue. And some people would like to argue for the other side as well as their own and say, well, they really believe this. Let's have that debate then. If you want to have a legitimate debate, debate is good for society, but it has to be respectful. It doesn't need to be hateful. So I can tell you that as a Republican official in the city of Chelsea that represents the city of Chelsea, I have felt extreme hatred. People sending death threats to my phone. So let's be real about what's really going on here. This is a political act tonight. It has nothing to do with the business of Chelsea. The policies of this city are set. This vote-
One minute, Councilor.
Will do. Nothing to change that. So I reaffirm what I said last week. If there is ever a resolution that comes before this council that is a partisan thing, I will vote against it, whether I agree with it or whether I disagree with it. And that will be the same tonight. Thank you.
Any other councilors? Councilor Lopez.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to, I'm supporting this, actually co-sponsored this resolution also. After a comment I read in a pamphlet for the past election, I'm a legal immigrant. What does that mean? That is like a threat to our people who live in Chelsea. We have a lot of non-citizen people and this is something that I, I got family, friends, people who are non-citizens of this country. And for someone to say that I'm a legal immigrant, what does that mean? Try to, to show on your face that I'm a legal immigrant? There's so many of us, Latinos and all, all people from different, from all, around the world, that we are legal, we are citizens too and we do a lot for this country. Thank you.
I don't recognize, Maldonado Vega.
I just want to take a moment and mention the importance of reaffirming Chelsea as a sanctuary city and how proud I am that I'm here in this moment. You know, I want to echo everything that all my colleagues have mentioned about the importance of this and something that Roy mentioned was the pressures out there. And some of those pressures, I know, my mother, some of you guys know who my mom is, Gladys Vega, and she was one of the leaders passing this and putting that pressure. And it's important for us to acknowledge that the political climate that we are living in, we cannot deny. You know, the realities that I have, I work with young people and I actually am debating, like struggling with two of my young people that their, their parents are in fear of living here and have mentioned to them, you know, you have to decide, asking a 15-year-old to decide whether they're going to stay here and stay here on their own because the parents are going to leave because they are in fear of living here because of everything else that is going on. And if you want to act like that's, this is not a reality because you can't empathize, shame on you. But I am fortunate that I am here and I'm supportive of this.
Councilor Brown.
Really, I wasn't going to say anything. I was just believed that we didn't need to reaffirm this here and I still believe that there's no reason to reaffirm the work that's been done. A lot of comments have been made about people moving in and moving out of the city. I think, you know, and I want to speak about the people that's moving in this city. The people that's moving into this city in our minority community, they're moving into this city because they know our dedication, our stance and what we've done in the past to make this community safer, every individual to call this place their home. There was a mention about an incident that happened in another city. Now, that's a city maybe that needs to be reaffirming and act, some violation. Nothing in this resolution talks about that we have been losing ground or slipping or falling behind the ball. Every prison, every county jail has gotten rid of ICE, they no longer detain detainees, they don't work, the DA does not work with it. Maybe I'm missing something here. Maybe we should have reached out to our city manager and our city chief of police and said, what kind of incidents are happening that we're not aware of that we have to remind people that this is a sanctuary city? I was original, one of the original members of the council that voted in favor of it. And the reason why we voted in favor of it, we didn't vote in favor of it to look at it five years, in this case, 13 years later and say, we need to affirm it. We voted for it because we want it to be a law of the land. Today, it is a law of the land. People come here, they feel safe. If someone or anyone that we know that's been violated or feel that they've been intimidated by ICE or anyone else, we need to let, not only our DA, who's very an opponent against it, to allow ICE to come into communities, take people out of courts or go into Chelsea courts, to harass folks. But we need to even talk to our police. I mean, let's give some evidence here and why didn't we have a discussion? This is a significant, this is a significant issue and I think if you really want to come up and really do something, that we really should engage the public into this conversation. I mean, we have something that I believe that's working. I've lived in Chelsea for 35 years and it's a lot better than it is, than it was then. It's more expensive because some of the things that we've done on the, on the background, but that doesn't stop people from coming into this city saying, I want to live here because, you know what? People in Chelsea care about the people that live in Chelsea. And I think our police department, I think our DA and I know our sheriff, Stephen Thompson, they care about the issues that address them with ICE. And I think, unless I'm missing a point here, I see no reason why we even listen to this. This is taking up time. We know that we have a city, and I believe we were like the second behind Cambridge that came up with it, and other cities are falling. I believe we even went to court against Donald Trump in his conversation regarding sanctuary cities. But guess what? None of our dollars have been taken. None of our dollars have been taken. We've still been here, we still have it here, it's still in full operation and, you know, to bring up, you know, that, you know, we need to affirm, what are we going to reaffirm next? That we need eight votes for a certain office holder to take office here? We don't need to go back and reaffirm anything, we have it here. I mean, it's the time of year, thank you. It's the time of year that we have, and we talked about the charter, we can talk about the charter. Every 10 years, we should affirm something, you know? But come on, let's be real here. Let's help our residents feel like they are 100% safe in our community and if we know residents has been intimidated and residents is having problems, let's try to help them. Let's stop trying to make all these rules and try to grandstand about what we're doing and stuff. Let's really do something really popular for the city and work with the city, man, and work with one another and make this city better. Thank you.
Councilor Cooper.
What this resolution says, it's a simple thing. We are standing behind the people that need it the most, the people that are in the most dangerous. And we're saying to them, good, we had it before, we still behind you and we're going to keep it behind you. A lot of things that they say and all that goes on, the only thing is, people come to our nation for a better life. My grandchildren are a product of that and I wouldn't give them up for nothing. They're great, they came from that environment, their ancestors came, they were illegals, they came from, but look at them now, they're productive Americans. So who are we to say that we can't treat, make this resolution safe? Come to my city and you'll feel safe. That's all we're telling them is come here and you don't have to worry about all the other stuff. Everybody needs a little spot to feel safe. And there's nothing wrong with us saying, this is what we want to do. We're not saying, oh, well, you come here, you commit all the crimes you want and do whatever you want. That's not what we're saying. We're saying, come to our city, if you live here and you can feel safe, that's a good thing, it's not a bad thing.
Any other councilors? I'm going on with the roll call vote.
A yes would be to accept it, a no would be not to. Councilor Zabat?
Yes.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Taylor?
No.
Councilor Recupero?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yeah, for the record, I voted for this in 2007, I'll vote today also.
Was that a yes or a no?
Is that a yes or a no?
So yes, Paul. I voted for it in 2007.
Councilor, Councilor Brown?
No.
Councilor Vido?
Yes.
Councilor Maldonado?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Abadajada?
Yes.
And Councilor Lopez?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, in favor, two opposed, the motion adopted.
Get the votes next time.
The next order, co-sponsored by Councilor Vido and Councilor Garcia, ordered that a subcommittee conference be held to discuss rolling back parking enforcement hours in the Broadway area on weekday evenings and weekends.
The chair recognizes Councilor Garcia.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to adopt unanimously under suspension if there are no objections and I wish to speak on it.
Hold on one second, let me just make sure.
Is that a recognition?
I will, if that's the motion, I will rule this out of order. I will allow, if you want to send this either to a conference to discuss-
Great.
Under suspension?
So I will, I will make a motion to send to conference to discuss.
Yes, just, just an amendment to just, yes, then.
Well, it's not an amendment, the actual order says to-
To discuss.
Right.
So, are we good?
We're good.
May I speak?
You may speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, I do want to fully clarify, I, first of all, I want to thank Councilor Vido for reaching out to me and telling me about this idea. This has been a conversation that's been up, we've had it constantly. I am the counselor of District 5 and I represent the downtown area and I know, I know Councilor Vido is very in tune with many of the issues that happen here and one of those key things that we talk about a lot is parking and the impact that that has on not only residents who live in the area, but also to the businesses and the participation of more customers in the area. So clearly, Councilor Vido has heard this, I have heard this as well, that a lot of the cities in the Broadway area, which we know is the heart of Chelsea and is always very busy, tend to be affected by the harsh enforcement that happens during the day hours and during the evenings and weekends. So we know that this is a challenge for everyone and that changing decisions always affects other parties more than others, but we want to have this conversation to see if there is a chance that we can roll back the parking enforcement in the area for a few hours. So that being said, what we're trying to explore with is, you know, giving, giving a little bit of, I don't want to say leeway, but giving a little bit of more visibility for drivers and customers to feel at ease when they're visiting these businesses, either getting their hair done or going to eat to a restaurant, that they're not going to be in the fear of not enjoying their food because they're going to get a parking ticket. And not only that, but many of the business owners here are being affected by, by these parking restrictions. But again, this is just a conversation that we want to explore, invite those businesses, make sure that we are very collaborative and hear from those folks directly that are being impacted. And I'm sure that Councilor Vido has more to add, so I will take a seat and we'll continue from there.
No.
I don't have anything to add. She did, you did great. Thank you.
Okay.
Next order introduced by Councilor Vido, ordered that the city manager provide a detailed report of nonprofits that receive financial support from the city and an explanation of scope of services and furthermore, that a subcommittee conference be held with each of the nonprofit organizations listed in the city manager's report as part of the annual nonprofit accountability series.
What is the word of council?
I'm waiting to be acknowledged.
Sorry, Councilor Vido.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to adopt unanimously under suspension. If there are no objections and briefly, I'd just like to speak on it if I may.
You may.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is something that I do every year where we ask the city manager to provide a report of all the monies that we give to the various nonprofits in the city and just to be transparent and holding folks accountable, just want to hear back about where these taxpayer monies that we're investing into these nonprofits are going. So I'm asking the city manager to provide a report and subsequently for us to then schedule meetings with these nonprofits to figure out what they've been doing with the money that they received. Thank you.
Next order.
Order introduced by Councilor Robinson, ordered that pursuant to the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 32, Section 20.6, that the compensation of the members of the Chelsea Retirement Board be increased to $4,500 annually.
Chair recognizes Councilor Robinson.
Move to a second reading if there are no objections.
Seeing none.
Next order introduced by Councilor Robinson, it's the CIP Capital Improvement Program Loan Order.
Chair recognizes Councilor Robinson.
If we can keep the Capital Improvement Program Loan Order and the resolution together and move to a second reading.
Okay.
If there are no objections.
The loan order and the resolution-
Resolution.
For the capital improvement project has been moved to a second reading.
Second reading.
We will be holding a public hearing on the CIP on next, on the 23rd, on our next scheduled city council meeting prior to the regular public speaking portion of the meeting.
The next order introduced by Councilor Vido, whereas this city of Chelsea has all of its allotted on-premises, liquor licenses and has very little- of its allotted on-premises liquor licenses and has very little, and if no control over whom said liquor licenses are transferred to, and whereas the absence of available alcohol licenses has hindered the city's ability to attract more restaurants and business to the city. And whereas the city has determined that an increase in the number of on-premise liquor licenses that are city-owned licenses will enable the city to reach its economic development goals, now therefore be it ordered by the city council, City of Chelsea, as follows, that the below be enacted as a petition for the adoption of home rule and that a public hearing is scheduled. Notwithstanding the maximum number of licenses authorized to be granted under Section 17 of Chapter 138 of the General Laws, the licensing authority of the City of Chelsea may grant up to 10 additional full licenses for the sale of all alcohol beverages to be drunk on the premises under Section 12 of said Chapter 138. Provided that such licenses shall be issued only to establishments that meet the city's definition of hotels, restaurants, and function halls. And provided further that, in the case of function halls, only the seating capacity is more than 100 persons. A license granted under this section shall not be transferable to any other person, corporations, or organization, and shall be deemed a Chelsea license. A transfer in violation of Subsection A or B shall render the license null and void. See, if a license granted under this section is canceled, revoked, and no longer in use at the location of original issuance, it shall be returned physically with all the legal rights and privileges pertaining thereto to the local licensing authority, which may then grant the license to a new applicant.
Chair recognizes Counselor Vido.
Thank you. I was going to ask that we waive the reading, but since he read the whole thing, I'd like to move this to a subcommittee on conference, under suspension, I'd like to speak on it briefly.
You may.
Thank you. This is a home rule petition that we put in last year. But because it's a new legislative session, upon the advice of our chairman, he asked that I resubmit it. So, we are, what we're asking for is to get 10 new liquor licenses in the city to help support some, and get some business going in the city. We're seeing a lot of businesses that are really struggling because they don't have liquor licenses. And as we become more and more dense, people want somewhere to go. I think it's a great way to kind of get our business, to support our businesses, so we can get some, I can't even think straight, to promote some business here. The 10 licenses would be, would, if we were, we're asking for 10 licenses, it would come back to the city in the event that somebody sold their business. We will be scheduling a subcommittee on conference on that. I wanted to say something else, and I can't remember what it was. So, for now, we'll just leave it there. Yeah, thank you.
Next order introduced by Counselor Vido, ordered that-
Chair recognizes Counselor Vido.
I'd like to withdraw the following order.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next, the last order introduced by Counselor Recupero, request that the city manager instruct all departments to have paper applications, not only computer applications.
I'd like to, under suspension, if there's no objection, I speak on it.
There's any objection? Speaking under suspension? Go ahead.
I believe that all of us have a right, the right to choose. And when you can't choose what you want to do, your right is gone. When they're telling you, "This is what you have to do," I'm not against, I believe you could say, "Okay, I want to go to a computer, yes. I want to go to the clerk, yes. And also want paper, yes." We should have a choice of what you want. This city shouldn't just say, "You got to go to your computer, and that's the end of it." All of us have a choice, and everybody doesn't necessarily agree to go to their computers. There's nothing wrong with you going to your computer, but you should also have a choice. And I believe that the city should give residents a choice. If they want to use paper, they should be allowed to use paper.
Seeing no objections, will you pass this? Are there any public announcements? Prior to, hold on, Chair recognizes Counselor Brown for public announcement.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very quick announcement, if you read the Chelsea paper this week, this Wednesday at the Public Library here at 569 Broadway, there will be a public meeting about the resurfacing, reconstruction, and a big project that's going to take place on Williams and Beecham Street. So, please come out if you have any concerns. They have a lot of projects going on down there, I mean, a lot. So, it will be under construction for about two years, starting this summer. It's going to be an enhancement, and it's going to be an investment. But again, it's still probably going to give us some detours and also some inconvenience of the route. So, please, if you live or travel on that route often, on a regular basis, Beecham and Williams Street, please come out on Wednesday night at the Chelsea Library, it's handicap accessible, and come out and let your voice be heard, hear about the project that's going there. They're going to be doing some underground wiring, some lighting, shared bike lanes are going to be installed there, but we need to know about it. So, don't wait to 2021, late 2021, 2022, and say, "Wait, why didn't they tell us they were going to change this?" They are going to change it, and they're going to lay out the project on Wednesday for the public. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chair recognizes Counselor Taylor.
So, I just wanted to take a moment to thank all the people that came out and voted for my wife and I last Tuesday, for Republican State Committee man and State Committee woman. We appreciate your support, and we will be your voice, and we will never give in to the bullying that happens every day, and we will fight for a fair and honest discourse. And I will always be respectful to-
Counselor Taylor, just, this is an announcement for any particular dates, thank you. Any meetings, such announcements for any events coming up, upcoming events? Counselor Zabot?
I would just like to acknowledge that tonight is the first night of the Jewish holiday of Purim, so anybody in the audience or at home, happy Purim, hag semeach. Thank you.
I have, I'm reading off the meetings that are scheduled off this week. We have a, the zoning board will be meeting this week at 6:00 PM. Community Schools Advisory Board also will be meeting, Traffic and Parking Commission will be meeting. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board meeting will be happening also, in addition to Human Rights Commission meeting. And on Thursday, the Licensing Commission will also be meeting. Now, we'll have moments of silence? No announcements? Counselor Vido?
I just want to, and I know that there's a lot of hype out there about the coronavirus. I just want to just remind everybody just to be cautious, and use hand sanitizer, and be careful. People are no longer shaking my hand, and I get it, people are nervous, but let's not forget to-
How doing you?
Let's not forget our humanity. So, I want to remind, there's a full moon tonight, and I would advise everybody to just go home, meditate and reflect a little bit, because at the end of the day, we're all here just to do the best that we can for the city. And I know that sometimes we don't always agree, but I know that we're all here for the right reasons.
Counselor Recupero?
I only have one announcement. A marginal street that's closed. At certain times, I don't know exactly when they close it, but many days, they close marginal street from the Meridian Street Bridge all the way down to Highland. So, people that live in that area at a certain time can't take marginal street, so try to find another way. I never know exactly when they close it, but they do. And, I don't know, find an alternative way to go home.
Thank you. Moments of silence. Counselor Vido? I'm sorry.
I have a moment of silence? Oh, did you have an announcement?
We're going to make an announcement.
Oh, okay. For Leonel Barajona and for Chris Valdez.
Counselor Garcia?
I have a moment of silence for my dear neighbor and great resident of this community, Mr. Max Martins, who is the, was the father of our firefighter, Tony Martins, who passed away last week, surrounded by his loved ones and family. He was an incredible person, lived 98 wonderful years, and 52 of those years he spent with his beautiful and caring wife, Sarah Martins. I know that, I was personally with the family this week, and she was very, very devastated, along with all of her family members, so a moment of silence for them.
Counsel Lopez?
And also for all the people that have died from the coronavirus in the United States and also around the world, please.
Counsel Robinson?
Also for Callahan's wife, who passed away this week. Also, Max Martin was known as Max the Taylor, who spent a lot of years starting at Walpers and then opened his own business here in the community.
Counsel Vido?
It's one of the names, but the father of our city solicitor, Shawa Watson Fisher, whose father passed away as well.
Can you announce the name?
Dennis Murray was a farmer school teacher that passed away.
That adjourns our meeting. Thank you.